Ms. Myers.
Well, I just want us to keep focused on what the issue is tonight. We've been told by the city administrator that people can come here and they can sleep out. That's been made very clear. And so, we didn't make that decision. The mayor made that decision. Somebody in his administration made that decision. The only thing that we've been asked to do is to waive or not to waive a provision in an ordinance that has to do with setting up a tent. Now, I have been on Bruce Beach when the homeless lived there. The homeless were allowed to live on city property in tents for many, many years. And nobody raised any concern, at least if they did, I didn't hear it, regarding the safety of persons who lived in tents on Bruce Beach. I would imagine that there are still people in the city limits who live in tents on city property. I don't know. I don't visit homeless camps, but Father Monk may know. But all I'm saying is that your concerns, Mr. Spencer, are very valid concerns. And I would expect that even though they come here on city property, they are required to abide by all code regulations. In the city, you cannot burn debris. That's not the case in the county. That's one reason I live in the city, because quite frankly, I'm allergic to smoke. Cigarette smoke, any kind of wood burning smoke. And so, the city has good codes, and we want those codes enforced. So, I would expect that there isn't going to be litter, there's not going to be improper burning of fire. And so, I expect all of our codes to be enforced and that there not be any favoritism. The only issue is, are we going to -- that's been brought before us tonight is whether or not people will be allowed to sleep under a tent or out in the elements. And in the past, we've never objected to homeless people living in tents on other city-owned properties. So, I'm still going to support the motion. Of course, I have concerns about people being in tents for the reasons that Mr. Spencer raised. But under the circumstances, since they've already been invited to come here to City Hall, we've been told that the mayor has consented for them to be here to sleep outside. That's why I'm making this motion, and I will support it. If they're going to be sleeping, they may as well be covered.
Councilman Spencer.
I just want to go on the record to make sure that everyone understands that preceding tonight's presentation, there has been some communication from the mayor's office regarding this City Hall campus going smoke-free. So, that has preceded this discussion, part of a wellness program. And I just want to make sure that's in the record, that cigarette smoking may be a thing of the past on this campus.
Thank you. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to thank Councilman Spencer for bringing up some of the concerns that have been filtering through my head. And I will say that I plan to support the authorization tonight, but it's not -- I don't do it in terms of a blanket authorization. I do hope that the mayor and the administration, with the information they have available, with, you know, speaking with the fire chief or others who can help ensure that this is -- that there are adequate parameters. We always have parameters on speech in City Hall. You have four minutes. There's rules about different things. And I think that having parameters should not be a violation of their free speech rights. And so, and the safety concerns of liability and things like that, I think, do need to be clearly addressed. We don't have the information tonight, and so, I think that the administration will be able to make a much more informed decision. We, in passing the resolution tonight, will be saying that in their judgment, if they can come up with a good resolution, we would support it.
Thank you. Thank you. I do have one more member of the audience, Mr. Charles Espy, that wanted to speak to the tent safety issue.
You really don't need no Oakland.
Welcome.
Members of the council, I thank you for this opportunity. I'm new here to Pensacola. I came from Marietta, moved over here in January this year. Mr. Spencer, about your concerns as to tent safety. I'm a member of the safety team, as several of the other people here are tonight. I personally have experience and training in dealing with this problem that you have mentioned as to fire standards in tents. I've been a Boy Scout for my entire life. I got up to Life Scouts before other concerns had to take over. So, I've personally dealt with this stuff. I've been trained with the emergency management for pretty much past 10 years with some gaps in every kind of training I could actually get my hands on. There are other members here in the safety teams that are prior service Marines, military of the other branches here, that also have training and have the knowledge to deal with the fire safety and fire standards. What I would like to bring to the council is that one of the agreements set for Occupy Pensacola was that there would be a safety team that would be here to self-police the group. That includes this nature of the fire safety in the tents. If the council does go ahead and move to allow us to have tents, I would -- I will put my own name and my own word on the line that I will personally go through, and I will make sure that the tents do not have flammable -- have anything in there that can be flammable. That includes alcoholic drinks of any sort. That includes lighters, anything of that nature. We will be self-policing no matter what. Thank you.
Mr. Gary Powell.
Good evening, councilmembers. It's Gary Paul Jr., please. So, one of the first things I wanted to do for those of us that are here and those of you who may not have seen that ordinance is read that ordinance. So, it's Section 8-1-7, fences, enclosures, or other obstructions on city property. It shall be unlawful for any person to have, maintain, occupy, or use, or cause to be maintained, occupy, or used, any fence, enclosure, building, house, shed, tent, or any structure, or any obstruction whatsoever on any street park or other property, or any -- this thing's long and convoluted, isn't it? Or any part or portion thereof, or other city -- where the hell am I? Or the city without the written permission of the mayor authorized by resolution of the city council first had and obtained. I've also been working with the city since this whole thing started and have been elected by the movement as a facilitator to work with the city. And part of the reason that we had decided to move to City Hall was that in these conversations, it was made known to us, the facilitators, that these tents wouldn't be an issue. And then today, we came in to get these permits and to speak with the city electrician workers and whatnot. And this came as a total blindside to us. And here we are, being amicable. Here you are, and I'm not putting words in your mouths, but I'm fairly certain that some individuals may have had preconceived notions of what this Occupy movement was or the individuals involved. And I'd like to say that these individuals have been fairly civil, given their first time in this chamber, just an opinion. It may come to pass that, as the city's not working with the movement and the representatives, that we're not able to facilitate those discussions any longer. That's just, you know, as has been mentioned, it happens in other cities. Other cities have worked with their government, and then certain things begin to falter, most times, nine out of 10 times, on the city's end. And then it just digresses. And then, you know, in Oakland, California, Marine gets shot in the head with a rubber bullet. He's in intensive care, anyway. So, the tent issue specifically, without beating around the bush, it is a minor code violation. Nobody's going to jail for that alone. And I'm putting it out there that I'm also fairly certain, not speaking for the movement, but tents are going to be set up regardless of this resolution passing, you know, your motion passing or not. What else did I want to say on that? As to Mr. Spencer, I was hoping he'd be back in here for this, but he had mentioned that -- how you doing, Councilman Spencer? Sorry. 11-4-178, which I had actually misquoted earlier, is what waives our fees and these other things for us, being that it's our First Amendment right. That's part of city code. And I just wanted to throw that out there. But also, as you had brought up, problems with egress and fire hazards and whatnot, why not work with us on that? Why not help us with that? We're already working on trying to set up pathways so we don't have that issue, so we don't have those problems. But it is a problem. I'd agree with that. We already recognize it with those of us working on a small city planning. So, why not help guide us? Has been also suggested earlier, we're trying to work with the city here, wholeheartedly trying, because we want this city to be a shining example. I know my time's up. I apologize. But we want it to be a shining example of how this movement can work with the city and how this thing can move forward. So, whether or not this motion passes, tents are going up. I'm just -- that's going to happen. People are going to get code violated or what have you. One last thing.
There are a few members of council that had questions for you.
Oh, please.
Councilman Hall.
Well, inasmuch as Mr. Powell said that -- that's right, Powell, right?
Paul. Like the first name, two Ls.
Two Ls.
Okay. Mr. Paul, he said tents are going to go up anyway, and we've had a very long discussion about this. I'd like to move the previous question.
Thank you, Councilman. And there is one more member of the audience that would like to speak to this issue. That courtesy is afforded, even though council is done discussing.
Okay. And we do have a motion in second, but in the interest of having one more person from the audience speak, the public speak, I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Mr. Jake Ashley.
I promise to be very quick for you, Mr. Hall. First off, I want to thank the city for helping and cooperating with us as far as you have so far. Very few cities in the country have. And so far, you have been a shining example. And the fact that you're talking with us and working with us right now just continues to prove that. The one thing I want to say, as far as the tents and the reason why we need them, food not bombs was brought up. If we're having food and we don't have anywhere to put it, that's bigger health hazard than I want to look at. The other thing is, through the first nights, some of the nights I was here, I actually went home after that, because I do have some contracting work that I do. And I became very sick myself, because there were tents at the time, but there weren't many. So, I slept without a tent. I became sick from that. There are people in Denver where the city is not allowing tents. They keep putting them up, they keep getting torn down. There are people with pneumonia who are in the hospital because they're sleeping in the snow. And that's really all I had to say, is I personally have become sick due to the weather, and I believe that we should have tents to help prevent that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. And I do have two members of council with their lights on. However, there have been multiple times speaking, and that was before Councilman Hall's motion. Do you still wish to speak at this point? Ms. Myers.
Yes, again, I just want to reiterate, even though if the council should approve my motion, it's still up to the mayor to exercise his discretion. We're just giving the mayor the authority to exercise his discretion. And so, just because it might pass here on council doesn't mean that it's going to happen, because what we're doing is that we're authorizing the mayor to give written permission, and he may not want to exercise that. That's how I read the ordinance.
Councilman Spencer.
First of all, I did not -- I don't recall saying that we would not work with you all. So, I certainly hope that I didn't come across that way as I was describing some of the concerns, just simply trying to educate and inform my fellow council members of what an endorsement may in fact have unforeseen consequences. I think you've got a friendly council here. And I say that with my one year of experience of watching us balance one another's opinions and be open-minded as best as we can. But I also want to remind fellow council members how I have been taught by some of you that are more experienced than me, that when decisions are made, we try to make sure those that can be affected are part of that decision-making process. And I'm just saying that there are other property owners, residents, business owners, and if there's someone here that is one, that's great. But this message just came out at 4:00 this afternoon. I imagine there are nearby individuals that have not been informed. And I'm just, again, reminding you that I have heard some of you chastise me or remind me that I should make a decision that also allows my decision-making to take into account everyone that is affected.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Townsend.
Thank you, Madam President. I probably heard someone say that, however we voted, that they were going to put up tents in there. Did I hear that?
I think you did.
That's most discouraging to me. We have spent, I know, in excess of an hour trying to ensure that we do the right thing and to just throw it back in our faces, disregarding what you do, we're going to do this. That's really disheartening to see someone to take that kind of stand when we up here trying to deliberate in the best interest of our city, best interest of you folks also. So, I would hope that we could maintain a leverage of respect for each everybody's opinion and not raise those kind of issues with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I would like to also say, tonight here, we have had a very prescriptive agenda that council votes on and must be followed, and you've noticed that, the order of business that we have taken. And there is proper notice to citizens, and that's what the agenda is. And by passing a resolution tonight, I do want clarification from Mr. Messer in a moment, if we will need to suspend council rules for proper notification to the citizens of this city in order to pass this resolution tonight, because it was not an agenda item. The thing that strikes me, we've had a very long conversation, and I respect everyone's right to free speech and to demonstrate and to make their feelings known. The irony is, tonight, we're talking about Section 8-1-7, but we that sit up here are elected officials on the most personal level of any part of government you could be on. We're representing our neighbors in city government, city of 52,000 people. We walked our neighborhoods. We know most of our neighbors, and we're here to do their good business. They pay their taxes. We provide safety in the form of fire and police protection. We ensure that we will take their tax dollars and spend them well and be good stewards of the assets of the city of Pensacola. That's what they trust us to do, and that's what the promise is. So, beyond the discussion about whether the Section 8-1-7 will allow tents, I think of our book of ordinances and the business that we do, the irony is, is that you can look at our whole book of ordinance and really what we would come to, to make the real change that you're hoping to make by occupying our City Hall or our city streets, we would pass a resolution and be in support of to the county, to the state level, to the federal level. But that's the only action we, as this body, as city council, could take. So, we can spend many nights, and we can discuss this till we have discussed it and can no longer think of another way to look at it. But I don't know what it's going to accomplish, first by waiving this and this council not being a good steward of the assets of the citizens of the city of Pensacola, or giving them proper notice, like Councilman Spencer has just said. This memo came out at 4:30. The mayor has said his position on this issue. I support that position, and I support giving the citizens of this city proper notice to have this discussion once we have all the information. I have not spent every day for the last few weeks discussing this on a staff level. That's what the staff has done, and that's where this recommendation came from. So, at this time, I do not have any more lights from council, and I have a motion in a second. If we could restate the motion, just so it's clear what we're voting on. Do we have a written version of that at this point?
The motion that I made was to allow, to authorize the mayor to exercise his discretion to allow or disallow tents on city property for a period of two weeks. That's the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Seeing no further discussion, please vote. And that passes five to four. We do continue open forum. There are 10 members of the audience that would still like to speak. And with that amount of citizens that do want to speak, I will allow three minutes per person to speak. The next speaker is Mr. Bill Paul.
Thank you. It's no relation to Gary. It's only one L. First, I want to thank you for the vote and on behalf of everyone. But I wanted to talk briefly about what that means to everyone. The tent issue to many of the people that are camping are -- is not -- they don't get the impression that the tent issue is about health or safety or anything like that. They get the impression it's about appearance. And it's symbolism. When we were on Martin Luther King Drive, we had people driving by yelling at us the first day and the second day. And then by the third and fourth and fifth day, it was the opposite, people cheering us on. The move here to City Hall was voted on by consensus from Occupy Pensacola because they were taking consideration the businesses around Martin Luther King. That is one of the main driving reasons why they wanted to come here and agreed to come here. And allowing the tents also speaks -- I'm sorry, I haven't had sleep in two days, and I've been working also. So, anyway, I just want to say thank you for the vote. I did want to speak before it, but thank you.
Our next speaker is Nicholas Alford.
Since you guys have already voted on the motion, I'm not going to waste any more of your time.
Thank you.
Try to get home early, have a good night's sleep.
Mr. Jeffrey Scott.
I just want to say thank you for all of your hard work, for all of your opinions that, you know, I may not have agreed with, but like the fire situation and whatnot, but it still showed your concern, and I love people voicing their opinions. I want to say for blurting out earlier that this was a sign language for applause, I apologize.
Thank you.
This is my first time in city council. I have been a drain on this community, and I will no longer be so. I have a sense of purpose because of this movement. Today, I met a gentleman named H.K. Matthews, I believe. I've got it written down somewhere. H.K. Matthews was involved in the integration of the races and the businesses on Palafax. I would like to say that I am sure that a lot of those businesses had a lot of problems and a lot of disruptions. He was arrested 35 times. He was pardoned in 1979 for all of these arrests. I want to thank you for your good faith work that you've done, and I would ask that you continue to operate in good faith. And if you have not done so, I'd suggest it's a good time to start doing so. Love you. I had a lot to say about why we are occupying, but I'll save that for another time. And when history looks at Pensacola, what will they see? Will they see a repeat of the bad behaviors of officials of the 60s and 70s, or a new type of cooperative spirit where the people are represented? If laws and ordinances do not reflect the will of the people, they should be abolished. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. William Fieser. I hope I pronounced that right.
Excellent, you did. I appreciate it.
Might be the German in me.
Yes, ma'am. City council, thank you for your votes. Thank you for your working with us for the past two weeks. We hope to work with you guys as well. Councilman Spencer, come out, talk to us, and let us know how to set the tents up to best serve you and ourselves. Thank you for your careful protection. Caleb, congratulations on being here. It's awesome to see young people getting involved in government. And I think that this group that's here tonight, we wouldn't have been here three weeks ago, four weeks ago, but we've woken up, and we're getting involved, and that's a benefit. Another benefit is meeting Mr. Matthews. I've always wanted to sit and speak with people that fought for the greater good, and to have that privilege today is a miracle. You know, that's the benefits of being the 99% and learning how this process works. You never know. We might have the next council member sitting here in the audience tattooed up. You know, we don't know what it's going to look like, guys. We invite you guys to come out and talk with us. Let us learn from your experiences. Hear our concerns, voice your concerns. We are for the marginalized. We are for the homeless. We want to work with the homeless. We are for the 99%, and we all encompass like that aspect of America. Thank you again for your vote of confidence.
Renquith Robinson.
I would like to thank all of you for your votes, even the negative votes, because sleeping outside without a tent, as I learned on outward bound in North Carolina, is miserable. But I would like to tell you something, and that is to say that even had you decided to criminalize sleeping in a tent, I will be out there on that grass through Christmas, through January, through February, until something is changed. Everyone else can leave. I will sit there. Also, I had a bit to say about the curfew, and that is, I went to Escambia High School. Now, I graduated this last class, class of 2011, represent, but I would like to bring to your attention that the kind of kids in those schools that would pay attention to a curfew are not the ones you need to enforce a curfew on. They are already at home on their computers or studying. I can't pretend that I know what's in y'all's mind about this curfew and the reasons for implementing one or asking that one is implemented. But there you have my opinion, fresh out of the high school. Again, thank you all for allowing us our conveniences. And I would ask that every single member of this assembly here, come down and have a chat. I will be there. I gave up my job. I gave up my home. I've even started to give up my car. This is something that a lot of people believe in. Vote us down. Shoo us out, but you will not stand in our way. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan Monk.
Am I speaking?
Yes, you have the floor.
Oh, I said everything I want to say earlier. So, I thank you guys very much for your decision, and I hope that Mayor Hayward abides by that decision, and I thank you guys for all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Krasinski.
Finally, for someone who hates public
Finally, for someone who hates public speaking, I'm just itching to get up here. I do want to let you guys know that I have talked to my neighbors, because I have Dulce Vita next door, the church over here. I raised my son, and he's the man he is today because of it, an amazing kid. So the only people I haven't talked to are the crack dealers that do live on DeVillers Street. And as far as we'll be offensive to them. But other than that, my neighbors are behind us. So, there you have it. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Councilman Hall, you have my apology. I missed your light on the last speaker.
Well, actually, it went a few speakers ago. And he's left the room. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I do not have any other cards of citizens wishing to speak. Is there anything else to come before City Council this evening? We are adjourned.